Okay, good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for May 25, 2017. We'll begin special hearing, sorry, review session. New cases, item number one, 2017-133A. Are we going to go through all of them?
Yeah, we'll call all of the--
All of the numbers. Yes. All of the GCLs together.
Okay, so it's one, 2017-133A through 138A. And it's 206 Beach, 42nd Street in Queens, 118 East 7th Road in Queens, 14-50 Gibson Street, Queens, 310 East 8th Road in Queens, 580 Lincoln Avenue, Staten Island, and 3089 Allen Place in the Bronx.
And 197 Beach, 25th--
I'm sorry, yes, I think it's the next page. Sorry, 197 Beach, 25th Street in Queens, which is 2017-139A.
That's calling the 35 and 36.
Right.
2036.
Jello, is that something that you want to--
Yeah.
No, this isn't the hearing.
This is a review session. Tonight, I thought Jello was going--
Not on the--
Not on this.
Yeah, on the gentleman's.
All right.
Unless you guys--
So--
Questions.
So I'll just repeat what we've been saying, a review session in the normal day. So this is applying generally to, well, first, the comments apply to Beach 42nd, Gibson, and Lincoln Avenue. DOT sent a letter of no objection stating that there are no existing or planned D O T capital projects. And the letter of no objection is provided that the projects follow the building statement on D O T requirements. The E P sent a letter of no objection for those same three sites stating that there are no existing or planned D E P capital projects in the privately owned map wide of way and setting forth most guidelines which-- but short of it is no building or other structure may be constructed over an existing D E P water or sewer main. And there were some-- Fire Department also had a set of caveats which include requiring that the fire sprinkler system be installed through a building and the building be connected to smoking carbon and oxide alarms. The underside of the exterior building have a fire rated assembly of two hours and that the height from grade of the windows at the highest window sill cannot exceed three feet. There are taggy extensions-- They also de-acted the first bulk waivers, time resolution, and then also waiver of the B S A application. And then several-- And schools, on East 7th Road, this one is slightly different. This one, the D O T sent a letter of no objection stating that the scope of the planned capital project that would affect the site that's not yet finalized and approved will object provided that either it's one six on the original creep storm sand footprint or a setback at least five feet from the block line. Similarly, the E P's letter had a series of conditions, which is that the building or other structure shall be setback at least five feet from the block line property. And Fire Department conditions, both waiver and full waiver, same as above as the other applications. So Gibson-- And then 8th Road is different from the others. D O T sent a letter of no objection for this site stating however that it is in the area of the planned capital project and stating that there are no objection. Letter is on condition that the building shall not be constructed within the D E P capital project area. And similarly, the E P sent a letter of no objection with similar conditions that the building shall not be constructed within the planned D E P capital project as indicated on the Department Design and Construction Plan, just map and or acquisitions plan. Otherwise, the conditions that we requested are the same as above. And then for Allen, we also are doing Allen Place, right? So Allen Place, the Fire Department, is waiving sprinklers? Right. And then they requested also, and so Fire Department signed off and was waiving sprinkler required for this application. And then the B S, they, the app can also request-- That's the same for--
Item number eight, 2017-153 and 154 B Z, 14A Messero Court and 7A Lake Avenue, Brooklyn.
Yeah, can you call all of these special?
Okay. Item number nine, 2017-155, 156 B Z, 26 and 31 Lincoln Terrace, Brooklyn, 2017-157 through 177 B Z, these are Sheep's Head Bay Courts in Brooklyn, and 2017-178 to 186 B Z, Sheep's Head Bay Courts in Brooklyn. These are all the special permits.
So we're going to do something different. The staff is going to provide some background information. It's just, it's the most efficient way to get it on our record. And also participating in the sort of handling and the sort of shaping of this. We'll share that. Or Jello will do much of the talking here. And I think we can just start.
Okay, so this presentation is just to give a little bit of background and to just show some images of this neighborhood, just so that you can kind of understand the unique situation here. So the neighborhood is Sheep's Head Bay Courts in Community District 13 of Brooklyn. This is an R 41 zoning district. The location is south of the Dahl Park Way. Here you can just see, there are 34 properties as part of this application. Here you can see that these homes are, many of the homes that are part of this property are accessed by courts that you can see here.
And we can continue moving.
And some of the courts have gates on them. And many of these courts are actually part of an easement that runs through these properties. And the easements vary in width, but can be up to 16 feet wide. But they are obstructed for the majority of their width. So you can see as we scroll through that there are many obstructions within the width of the streets or of the courts. And because of that, the access, they really have about only four feet wide in general. The easement is unobstructed for. So, yeah, so you can kind of see in the New York City map, aerial map, that these courts, like Messero Court, Dunn Place, et cetera, have access to mapped streets that are on the official city map, which are the Chelder, Brown, Emmons, Perrin, and Nelson. But the courts themselves are not mapped streets and they received G C L 36 waivers from B S A in January of last year. These are the three main blocks that are part of this application, 87, 96, 87, 97, 8800. You can also see the courts on these maps even though they actually run along the property lines. And this is just a land use map illustrating that the majority of the neighborhood is really residential, single-family homes. This was taken from one of the applications. And then the majority of the properties are undersized for the zoning district, so they're less than 2,375 square feet. From the application, the applications we have here, they appear to be around 1,300 approximately square feet. So they're undersized for the zoning district. And most of them are either narrow, so they're less than 25 feet wide, and shallow or both. So the shallow is when they're less than 95 feet long. And this is also from one of, this is from H R O, and you can kind of see some of the obstructions, like walls and fences that are within the courts. And obviously, what goes without saying, that there's no vehicular access-- And then-- I just wanted to show some more images, kind of illustrate-- These are part of one of the applications, and I thought it was a nice map highlighting a lot of the properties. Yeah. And more images showing how narrow these courts are, but that they serve as access ingress and egress for the property owners.
Yes, nobody has--
I don't think they, I think your grant team will take up most of the space.
Yes. And bring the half then.
So, this, just some things to note. This, these properties, as part of this application, are utilizing Appendix A of Article 6, Chapter 4, Special Regulations for Neighborhood Recovery Areas. So this is in a neighborhood recovery area. So as part of this application, both Appendix A and underlying zoning regulations are being requested to be waived because many of the yard requirements are tied to Appendix A.
So there would be like a special yard or narrow lot provision--
Yes.
--in Appendix A? And--
They don't meet that.
And they don't meet that. And so, and so we have, yeah. And so there's a little bit of belt and suspenders. We're just going to say waive it all.
Whatever it is, if it's a yard, it's not a yard.
Yeah.
And because of the nature of the courts, which you saw in all of those images, these really, these courts, they are really not considered by D O B to be streets by the definition of this opening resolution.
Yeah. And D O B communicated this interpretation and felt very strongly that it needed to sort of protect the integrity of that interpretation for other cases, right?
A path.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That some little, you know, sidewalk that then become obstructed for some--
And the easement itself is, the easements are obstructed. Even the four feet, they're not really supposed to be four feet wide. They're supposed to be much wider. But they're obstructed and removing those obstructions would be very difficult, so.
And then getting to the zoning definitions for lot lines, you know, sort of the definition of yards is tied into lot lines. We do have, I mean, standalone definition of lot line is the boundary of zoning lot. These were all under single ownership in 61 and zoning lots. And so we have lot lines, but we don't have a front lot line. We don't have rear lot lines. You can probably get to side lot lines if you wanted to, but, but it doesn't seem to do much for us, given that the side yard is, is a yard that extends to the side lot line from the rear yard to the front or from the front lot line to the rear lot line. And you don't have--
And you can't skip from one zoning lot to the next.
And you can't skip a zoning lot. So we felt it was just safer to say, these are lot lines and we are waiving the yards. That's what we have here.
But these are the zoning regulations that tie to the fluff, the yard requirements.
And I think, you know, typically, we would have sort of a degree of waiver, but in this case, we don't have a degree of waiver. We're just saying they're not there.
They do have--
Open area.
Sorry, what do you mean? We're just saying they're not there.
There's just not--
A front yard.
Right. There's an open area that we could say looks like a front yard. And they're, they're requesting a waiver of 6492. And Jello gave all of this. We have just some of the property images.
Yeah, just an example of a property.
Yeah. We thought this one was good because there's clearly some, somebody's elevated here already. So, you know, in terms of the neighborhood character, yes, we've got this time. The future is, is coming.
And aren't a lot of more applications in this neighborhood? Or there are 34 properties and I'm not sure--
But there's a lot of the streets.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The ones with--
There's a lot going on on those streets.
With street frontage, don't necessarily--
Right, but the answer to the question, the ones that are facing the street are building back, have already been elevated quite.
Yeah, this is, this is the review session.
Steve, you're going to have to--
We'll let you, we'll let you try. It feels very informal. Yeah. And then, you know, we have, this is the site plan.
You can see the easement on the site.
Yes. And then sort of the elevation of the, for the future home there, which she-- These are modest homes.
Well, many of them on the list are being--
Yeah.
So some being elevated, some--
So this one was about 765 square feet existing and is proposed 865 square feet.
And new ones--
Right, the new ones--
Whatever that is that's around.
Yeah, it increases to open areas.
Just another--
That was one of the questions I had. The ones that are being lifted, I assume, are not substantial damage because the reconstruction gave you such a much better layout. That would have been nice to reconstruct all of them, but I guess that's the limitation.
Yeah. Okay, Chair, okay.
Lives a degree of damage.
This is the last concern image we have.
Oh, and they're all complying.
And they all comply. Okay, so we can, any--
No, so I'll just go through, well, the big questions also. So let's see, we also took a point, we also have a G C L waiver that we issued last year. There's requirement that all the house by Fire Department, that the houses will be fully sprinklered, have smoking carbon and oxide alarms, and that the underside of the floor, first floor, will be fire rated to two hours and maximum height of the bottom will sell 32 feet. And also requesting a B S A--
Let's close the review session.
That finishes the reviews, public review session for May 25. We'll now commence with the public hearing, special hearing for May 25, 2017. New cases, item number one through item number seven, 2017-133A through 139A, 206 Beach, 42nd Street, Queens, 118 East 7th Road, Queens, 14-15 Gibson Street, Queens, 310 East 8th Road, Queens, 580 Lincoln Avenue, Staten Island, 3089 Allen Place, the Bronx, and 197 Beach, 25th Street, Queens. So all G C L 36 and 35 waivers.
Right. I don't know if it's necessary to go through the comments from the review session, which just gave out the scope of the waivers and the requests by D O T and D E P and Fire Department, which are compliant with certain kinds of obligations under the community there, and others with no objection. So is there anybody who'd love to speak on this?
Yes, thank you. Should I just-- I'm Thaddeus Hackworth, General Counsel for the City's Housing Recovery Office, here in support of the, our request for waivers, G C L 35 and G C L 36. Are we handling these together?
Yes. All 35 and 36.
Got you. Okay. So as you know, through hearings in 2016, the Builder Back Program, which is designed to assist homeowners with homes damaged by Hurricane Sandy, obtained 2,912 G C L 35 waivers. We're now seeking five additional G C L 35 waivers for homes that have been identified by D O B as containing a street widening line within the property. These G C L 35 properties, in consultation with D O T, D E P, and D D C, have been grouped into one of three categories based on their proximity to active capital projects, capital projects in design, and no capital projects. H R O, D O T, and D E P have also agreed to siding conditions based on the status of the capital project and to ensure that no properties are over, are constructed over D E P water or sewer mains. We've also agreed to conditions with F D N Y that you heard about in your review session regarding sprinkling, requiring the building sprinkled, sprinklered, that the buildings have fire and carbon and oxide alarms, that they have a two-hour fire resistant rating on the underside of the building, the exterior of the underside of the building, and that the height from grade plain to the highest window sill may not exceed 32 feet. In addition to the G C L 35 waiver requests, we also have two G C L 36 waiver requests for homes that were identified by D O B as being located on a unmapped street. And in 2016, we previously obtained 1,170 G C L 36 waivers. We are now requesting to add these additional two. For these two, we've agreed with F D N Y that they will review and approve the design for all properties and that this approval will be required prior to sign off. And again, the approval is contingent on the same requirements that I mentioned, the same four requirements for I D one. So with that, we request that the board grant G C L 35 and G C L 36.
Are there any other speakers? Any comments? Okay, so with that, I can make a motion to close this part of here. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Al Kukubra?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Al Kukubra?
Aye.
Item number eight through item number 11, 2017-153, 54 B Z, 155 to 156 B Z, 2017-157 B Z through 2017-177 B Z, and 2017-178 B Z through 2017-186 B Z. The addresses are 14A Messero Court and 7A Lake Avenue, Brooklyn, 26 and 31 Lincoln Terrace, Brooklyn, various addresses at Sheep's Head Bay Courts in Brooklyn, and also Sheep's Head Bay Courts, Brooklyn. These are special permit applications.
And so as mentioned in the review session, these are applications to waive the front, side, and rear yards on all of these sites. The sites do not run on those zoning designed streets, whether they're worth a lot of paths considering front lot line, side lot line, rear lot line. It's a combination of new construction and elevation, so the buildings that are going to be newly constructed will improve their site conditions by increasing the size of that dislocated area so they're not the same as ours. As part of the requirements, the houses are required by Fire Department to sprinkler or smoke carbon oxide alarms, have the underside of the first floor have a two-hour assembly and maximum height of grade to the window sill is 32 feet. All of these sites have already received G C L 36 waivers.
Oh, as I mentioned before, I was just wondering why the homes, or the homes being lifted, limited was due to substantial damage. Something just verbally--
Joanna Pesca, Bureau of Construction Manager. We follow the program requirements and standards, and those homes which are substantial damage are being reconstructed and those that are not are elevated.
Okay. Because, just because the open area is so much better proportioned in the reconstructions. I actually visited the sites yesterday and had some questions in terms of how is this work going to be done? Because there is no access for equipment. Anything that comes in has to go up and down a few, six steps. The path is four feet wide. How are you running it equipment and how is this work going to be done?
This is a very important question for us as well. We began evaluating our options. We know that we will be working in a very tight condition. We are identifying access that is most feasible, and it's different for each court. So for Stanton Court, for example, we are negotiating with a homeowner on the Chelder Street, and we will be using the pathway, which is four feet wide, as well as portion of this property, by negotiating construction license agreement with the homeowner, installing a ramp going down to Garrison and Stanton Court. That way, contractor will be able to bring materials. Many of them will be brought by hand. A lot of activities will be by hand. Some small equipment, as it is allowed, it will be evaluated what is appropriate. We have two major goals. It has to be safe and it has to be minimal impact and negative. So we will create a plan after we evaluate the conditions appropriately and determine the strategy. We will present this plan, we took to the city, and we will present this plan to the neighborhood, to the community, and only then we will start activities. Nothing is going to start as a, something unknown and that people don't expect. We will try also to minimize noise, but the issue is tightness. So there is several construction license agreements that are being negotiated as we speak by H R O, and H R O may add to it to allow, to allow us for this access. We are going to then restore, after construction is completed, all the pavements, the stairs. The program does not really include A D A access to the entire neighborhood, but we will restore any stairs that we're going to impact by using it for construction access. And then again, Lake has different issues. We are negotiating rental of one of the properties, 19 Lake. We are negotiating access to 8 Lake, to the middle of Lake Avenue. And on Messero, most of the activities will be done by hand because it's very tight and access is quite challenging. So to summarize it, we are aware of these challenges. We are evaluating them. We're working with the homeowner, trying to get agreements from them, and we will create a plan acceptable to the community before we proceed. And we will restore all the areas that will be impacted by construction.
So all your orders, are they, all the piles are ordered?
I'm sorry.
The piles are all--
Piles.
Are all what you ordered?
Yes.
So you have to give that answer.
That's right.
Okay.
Sometimes they take the equipment apart and they rebuild it on site. That's why I say that we know a lot about the subject from Fire Island, where there are little tiny paths and that, and then lift the houses, it's like, almost like a jack and you climb the car. So--
Then I had a question about, there's two semi-detached homes at the intersection of Stanton and Garrison--
Right.
Where you're going to separate one of the homes and rebuild it--
That's great.
On each pair, and the other one is going to remain. On each pair, and the other one is going to remain as is. So, do you have to rebuild the party wall, and do you have the permission of the adjacent home owner?
I will say that 15 Stanton, this construction license agreement, because we finalize, according to HRO, so we have a permission to detach the adjacent home and reconstruct it. And 25 Stanton is being purchased by the city, and is currently scheduled for close.
Okay, good.
And actually, this area, we're going to use for staging. We will demolish this home and use it as staging. It's in a critical area of accessing Stanton Court from the south side.
All right. Then I had a question about 3 Lake.
3 Lake.
Which is a reconstruction in the same exact footprint. Is that true?
It's a seven-floor architect, HRO.
I was just wondering why it wasn't modified.
We actually, we made an attempt to modify it, but the house, because of the constraints relative to setbacks, the house got so narrow, literally, that the building envelope was 12 feet wide. So...
Oh, you mean if you made it... if you reconstructed it?
We reconstructed it, meaning it's only building requirements with the bicep options. So, one of the options...
Well, that's code requirements.
Code requirements.
It's zoning.
It's zoning. So, one of the options for the program is to rebuild in the exact same footprint, which I believe is the only home network doing that.
Yeah, I thought maybe it was really just a lift, but it's a reconstruction. Okay. Then I have a question. I have a question back to... so I saw there were some con ed bolts in the street, I also saw there were some kind of drainage structures in the pathways, not the streets. Some drainage structures in the paths where water was going down, but, you know, I didn't see any evidence of any manholes or water mains, or... I sort of uncared those, so I guess they have gas. Is that the case, or what is the situation with utilities?
It's a difficult situation. These utilities are 100 years old. We had spent a significant time really understanding these facilities. The water mains run along Stanton...
In the path?
Stanton Court. I'm sorry?
In the pathway?
Yes.
With electric lines?
The electric lines are unpulled.
Oh, okay.
The sewers run behind the homes. We are working with HRO and still discussing this issue, what would be the best solution for the courts, but we are fully aware of poor conditions of the utilities.
Because, the reason why I'm asking is because all these homes have to be sprinkled, but one in our back, because well, has most of them.
New construction.
Yes.
New construction will be sprinkled, right. And so, on Lake Court, it will be one home that will be sprinkled, and on Stanton, there will be more because there will be more reconstructed homes. And architects may speak about the compliance with the code. The goal was to comply with the building code and the fire code.
Okay. And then in terms, there is gas to these homes?
I'm sorry, gas?
Gas.
Gas is via national grid, and is connected to this house.
In the same pathway?
Gas is along Stanton Road on Stanton Court, and we have not received final survey yet on Lake Court. We are currently executing surveys, quite doing surveys in Lake Court, in Lake Court.
And then, the only two pro... One other question I have was about, the steps are in very poor condition at two of these places, but you just said that once you use them, you're going to reconstruct them?
Yes.
Because they're falling apart in many cases. And the other thing is that it seems kind of strange to put lifts into buildings where you don't have ADA access in the pathway.
Right. This is a very...
It's required?
This is a very good point you are raising, and we would have to discuss further with HRO. It has not been part of the program, and it also would require impact on several properties outside of the program to allow rampage, allow foundation for rampage, potentially contain walls. This would have to be further discussed with HRO, but it's not part of the program, and we have not done it. The only thing which I can say is that whatever will be impacted by construction, it will be restored. So, steps that we're going to use for us, construction, will be rebuilt.
I think the question was, the houses have lifts.
Some of them.
Right, some of them are trying to have lifts. Obviously, if the homeowner is requesting it, is that...
Yes, the homeowner is requesting.
So, but, maybe, it may be that they're mobile, they're just, they're not in wheelchairs, they're going on flights, right? So, it's true that...
There is one, only Lake Avenue has very steep country.
Right. I very much appreciate this comment, and I will discuss it potential, how we can potentially get on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Levine, R.A., Special Technical Advisor Department of Design and Construction. I'd like to address some of the comments or add to what Joanna had said, that we're very...DDC is very well aware of the staging issues. You know, part of my other head is the DDC Build It Back Demolition Unit, and, you know, it's my first thing we're going to do is do demolition, and we're very well aware of the practical difficulties in coming down, and we are literally boots on the ground with the contractors, and there's going to be a lot of hand labor involved, has to be done in a safe manner, and, you know, the staging, where we put the dumpsters, where we put the equipment, how do we come in with the rigs, with the lifting, you know, we are very well aware of it, and we are developing a plan in conjunction with CMs and with the our other partners, HRO and City Hall, because we need to look at everything globally, right? Because we're having all this activity happening, you've been to the community, you know, we need to, you know, if we're going to disrupt, or we're going to take away parking, whatever, you know, we need to get everybody on board, so people, you know, in person, I mean, no one likes to be surprised, right? So, we want to get everybody on board, and we are working towards that, because we do recognize that. Utility issue will be part of what we'll be dealing with, because before we do any demo, obviously, we have to have all the utilities covered, and we want to make sure that, that what we do to one person doesn't affect somebody else, because these homes have developed over time, so we are going to ensure that that's done. The 3 Lake Road, to follow up on what Kevin said, is a very irregular lot as well, and that's basically, it's so irregular that the only way to build it was upon the footprint, and it wasn't great, but there's really no other way to do it, to get a kind of buildable space. The ADAs, as Joanna said, will be another conversation that HRO and CMs have to have, but DDC is aware of that as a practical issue. Yes, the lifts, for the individual homeowners, generally speaking, if they show a medical need, it's reviewed by HRO, my colleagues in HRO, and they are approved for a lift to get them up to that level. So, that's what I saw them do, based on a medical need. Okay. Question?
Yep. Any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Dan Olson, Borough Director, Housing Recovery Office. Thank you again for taking this time. In my area, what I've been dealing with has been very active in working with the homeowners that have been living in the courts since Sandy, and it's been a very long journey, and, you know, through this process, through this necessary process, there have been several homes, there would have been more potentially if we were able to act quicker, if there were certain easier ways of getting these homes into construction, but as we've all learned, it's a very difficult situation to get these homes into construction, so there's been a lot of trying to keep the faith, as you said.
So, those people dropped out, the other people?
Yeah, and then we also did an act of outreach to bring homeowners that never registered with the program to do this as a larger project, so we could impact as little homeowners as possible. Some of those are brand-new intakes in this program, others, lack of faith, you know, been to so many meetings, don't have confidence that the government could do something. It's been a very long journey, so we're in constant contact with these homeowners and just trying to keep them, it's like, it's happening, it's happening, and we just keep them updated on a regular basis about all the difficult hurdles that we've been getting past to get them into this construction, and they're finally very, very happy to know that this is about to happen. We have active support from Councilmember Deutsch's office, Assemblywoman Weinstein, Senator Savino, Senator Golden, they've all understand, like, nobody will publicly say that they would like, it would be better to just start from scratch and come up with a better solution, but their constituents live there, they love to live there, and they want to do everything that they can to bring them home and bring them home. So, that's what we're trying to do, and I thank you all for your time for, hopefully this makes it happen.
I'm curious about the ones who drop out, are they thinking to sell home, or just wing it for the next time?
Some of them have just sold on the private markets. We've offered buyout options, so we can have control of their properties, but in some instances, because of the way the market is, they may be able to get a better offer than what we're able to offer through the CDPG files.
But those purchasers then are doing their own thing?
They may, they may not be doing anything.
There's quite a few. They look like advanced carpenters.
Correct.
Are there a lot in foreclosure?
It's not as many as it looks, surprisingly, but there are, you know, we've been working closely with CNY, CM to identify what, how far, which ones are in foreclosure, how far along they may be, if it's directly with the bank, we can speak with the bank about trying to take ownership of, because how long the foreclosure process is, it's still negotiating with the current homeowner and seeing where we can, where we can get my easement and permission to do certain things.
Any other questions, comments? I can...
Thank you.
Okay. So, if there are any other questions?
Chair, would I like to make something in?
Sure.
And I have a written copy that I'll hand in for the record. Once again, my name is Steve Levine, R.A., Special Technical Advisor Department of Design and Construction, and this is really a summary of what you've already heard before you, but it gives you, it gives you a real, you know, picture. You know, you can imagine Brooklyn 125, 130 years ago, this area of Brooklyn was a resort area. There was, Sheepstead Bay was known as a resort area, the adjacent community of Manhattan Beach, where Freedom World Colleges, had a big hotel there, and not too far away, you had the community of Brighton Beach, and then you had Coney Island, and Coney Island had Dreamland, Steeplechase, Luna Park, which is now a project. So, this was, this was the playground. This was a suburb. What we see now currently is the MTA lines with Long Island era. So, people would come out for the day. If you're from Prospect Park, there was a bridle path that led down Ocean Parkway. People would come out for the day and take their horses down and enjoy it. So, that's kind of just the background of how this developed. And by the same token, you had people living in the community that, you know, were not as affluent, but they enjoyed Sheepstead Bay as well, they have their boats, and go ride out and go fishing. Having said that, now I'm going to just read a little bit, I want to give you some of the background. Sheepstead Bay was originally somewhat a resort community that had a racetrack in the 1890s, and it was known for its ends, it was known for its fine dining restaurants, and in the late 19th, 20th century, it was known as Brooklyn's Gulf Coast. Eventually, modest and affordable bungalows started, and taverns started to replace these opulent dwellings and these opulent restaurants. In the 20s, the land started to be developed. It was mostly, it was mostly marsh, primarily where the courts are. And what the developers did, they went across to the Vegas, and they started dredging and building in these areas, you know, filling them with sand. And they built these, what we see now, these one-story typically bungalow-type blocks. Most of these properties were built between 1920 and '29, and they're originally summer, summer bungalows that eventually converted to full-time use. The homes are accessed typically by a four-foot-wide private path that, as a result of easements, that allow ingress and ingress from the adjacent public streets. They function as a public way for these homeowners, but they are not legally a public way as by definition of zoning. Most of these homes, as you're aware, is located on the interior of the block. The street grid and curb elevations around these properties in 1971 were raised and created the bathtub effect that these homes currently sit in. So, when any kind of major storm, this bathtub effect is exacerbated by the streets being much higher, and that's why you see like six or seven rises going down, you see the ramps like on Lake Road, and so, part of this program hopefully is to alleviate those conditions. The properties in Sheepstead Bay Courts lack a front line because they don't, a front lot line, because they don't front a screen, if you look at the zoning definitions. The absence of a front lot line means we can't determine a rear lot line, a side lot line from a zoning point of view. So, basically, you know, we have something that by definition can't, can't be a side yard, can't be a rear yard, can't be a front yard. These applications, and what I'm going to just say, I'm speaking in generalities for all of the homes, okay? There are, each home still have some slightly different nuances. The applications basically seek to waive the front law requirements, 2345, 64A351, side yard regulations of 23461, 64A32, rear yard regulations of 2347 and 64A31, under the special permit process of...
A 311 or a 353?
Okay, it would be a type of, a 311, they get in fact. Okay. Okay. And basically, what, the lot lines have no subsidy. So, what really, really what's before you is, the setbacks from the lot lines as proposed are merely going to be open areas, and not yards as defined by the zoning resolution. Typically, the existing lot coverage and open space which govern these, they're not going to change before the applications, before the board, and typically, the distance between the building and the adjacent property lines have been dramatically improved, and the distance has been increased in comparison to the existing, existing conditions, and that's primarily new construction where the architects were able to do that. And the elevates, that's more difficult, you have what you have. In order to, in order to elevate these homes, zoning compliance with flood-resistant construction standards is required. This necessitates the elevation of the first floor of a higher elevation. The homes, the homes shall be elevated in its general current location, therefore, they won't be, have any additional increase in the footprint or decrease the existing open space or lot coverage. There would be practical difficulty in complying with flood-resistant construction standards, and it's the minimum relief necessary to comply. There will not be any modification of bulk for the elevation of these homes above the flood-resistant, flood-resistant construction elevation, and that is being asked in applications before the board. The relief requested will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It'll keep long-time residents in place, it is in harmony with the Sheepstead Bay Special This, this community is a mixed-density community, it's a waterfront community, that's further preserved by the community seeking and obtaining the Sheepstead Bay Special Zoning District. The majority of these homes are within 200-foot radius of the applicants before your property are similar. They're one- and two-story detached homes, they're bungalow-type homes. Many, many of these homes have been in the same family for many generations. One of the mayor's Build It Back calls has been to build back our communities and keep the existing residents, residents into the community, and in consideration, I would like you to consider in granting this relief, we can move these communities forward and meet these goals, and get our residents back in, and basically have a resilient community for the next generations and generations ahead. And thank you very much for the time in the automated air by the US.
Thank you.
End of record.
Yeah. I just want to correct one thing. You are requesting bulk waivers of the elevations, and the whole issue of outside yards is considerable, it's just that not really...
Correct.
All right. So, any other questions, comments? So, on that note, I'd like to make a motion to close this hearing. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oakley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant all of these Build It Back applications. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oakley-Brown?
Aye.
This concludes the public hearing for May 25, 2017.